So Mayor, Council, tonight, we have a report on our body worn camera program. We have been implementing the program over the last several months and the Chief is here to talk, Kevin is here to talk about the program. And we also wanted to give you an overview of our special unit, Special Operations Division. It's been a long time since we've been fully staffed in that division, so I wanted to take a little bit of time tonight and just revisit what that unit does, especially in a lot of some of the things that have happened in schools over the last several months. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Donna. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I'm going to pass around one of the body worn cameras. I know you guys saw them at the retreat, just so you can see them again. And this is just going to be an update on the body worn camera program. So if you all recall, we went with the Axon brand and we went with the Officer Safety Program that they offer. That is a replacement program that will provide body worn cameras and tasers along with all the accessories and unlimited storage over a five-year period. The body worn cameras are replaced every two years and the tasers every five years. The funding in year one, which is fiscal year 2018, this is our first year, you all approved just over $276,000 to implement the program. In years two through five, we would need roughly $214,000 to continue the program. That equates to roughly $120 per officer per month for body worn camera, taser, and unlimited storage. The other part of it was the evidence technician. You all funded in fiscal year 2018. The salary for that evidence technician, and that was roughly $57,000. We have hired that technician in December of last year, and she has been fully trained on everything that she would need to do, as well as processing of digital evidence. The state mandated that we attend training prior to any implementation of the body worn camera program, so that delayed us a little bit in getting that up and running. We started training February the first, and officers would report for a four-hour block of training. They were issued the body worn cameras at that time. Once they completed the class, then they would deploy their cameras in the field. So we had a partial implementation throughout the period. To date, we have deployed just under 120 of the 154 that we plan on deploying. Right now, we have two more classes scheduled this week, and then we'll obviously have some makeup classes for those that have been out and missed. Currently, our body worn cameras do not have any triggers that activate them, other than the officer, so it's dependent on the officers to activate the camera. And that's the big round button on the front of it. Officers tap that twice to start the recording. Anytime we start a recording, there is a 30-second pre-record that records video for that 30 seconds. There's no audio, it's just video, but it goes back in time. And that captures things that, you know, the officer may get out on something, and while he's already out, tap the record so it'll go back 30 seconds to pick that up. When we made this purchase, there were no triggering mechanisms out there. Now Axon has offered some triggering mechanisms that will remotely activate the body worn camera. And of course, there's a cost for that, right? For $20,000, that would equip all of our marked vehicles with up to eight triggers, and that would include 65 vehicles, all of our marked vehicles. So that is something that we're looking at right now, because the last thing that we want is an officer to, in the heat of the battle or whatever, to forget to record, because that's going to be the video that we need, right? So the triggers, they will activate the body worn camera if they're set up to do so. Whenever the officer turns on the emergency lights, opens the driver's door, unholsters a weapon or taser, either one, and then also the rifle gunlock inside the car. So, you know, those are the things that we would naturally want an automatic trigger on. The driver's door, if we set that up, they're going to have to remember to turn it off if they're getting out at 7:11 or whatever. But it would be on.
A lot of love, huh? Yeah. And Council, I think that we could likely fund that with our savings that we have within the department.
Thanks, Senator. You can automate it. Just keeps everybody safer.
It's safer.
So is that all three, all three triggers, or do you set, you set what you want?
It's my understanding from the quote that we would get up to eight triggers per vehicle, however we want to set them up. And really, they can be anything that has an electrical current or voltage that passes through it, like the door opener on the car, you know, it's got the button that turns off the dome light, so it's kind of wired. So they wire directly into those types of things.
The vanity lights on the sun shades?
Yes. If we wanted to turn it on, yes.
And that was a total cost of $20,000?
Yes.
Right now, it's a quote.
It seemed really low to me, too.
Yeah.
So it sounds really low, but...
We can get it lower.
In your background package, you all received our complete body worn camera policy. I wanted to point out just a couple of things on there. Naturally, everybody wants to know when we're going to record. So this is when the officers have no discretion, they must record. And that's upon observation of suspicious or criminal behavior, before exiting the vehicle, when responding to a call for service, whether dispatched from a, officer initiated contacts, arrest, field contacts, traffic and pedestrian stops, as well as vehicle and foot pursuits. So once again, they shall start the recording in any one of those situations, no discretion. We did want to put in some discretion for the officers where it concerns privacy or the dignity of others. You know, occasionally, we will come across someone that's intoxicated or what have you that may be partially clothed and things like that. So this allows the officer to cover the lens. Whenever he does that or she does that, they must state why they were doing that. But that way, we don't have video of, you know, a naked person when we don't need it for law enforcement purposes. So in closing, the implementation was a smooth process. It's functioning as desired. All video is stored on the cloud, so there's no need for server space or anything else. Chris Lee's here somewhere, he's happy about that. And there's been no negative network impact on city operations. We had some concerns initially that as we uploaded tons of video, that it would slow down the network. ITS tells us they have not seen that yet. And there will be tweaks going forward. We will continue to review the policy and procedures and adjust things as we need to. There may be things that we realize afterwards that we need to address. And once again, the Chief mentions this every time we talk about body worn cameras, the cameras will not capture everything. Just keep that in mind. There are going to be instances where the officer's arm is in the way, or it's something outside the camera view. And the Chief's going to pull up the backed office to evidence.com and show you all just a sample video of what it looks like. And this is one of our very own videos.
This is that first 30 seconds where it's video, but it's not recording audio. So when it's the 30-second mark, it'll, it'll kick up. So we'll just go ahead and, yeah, we'll just look at that. It's only a couple minutes long. We're in a school zone up off of North Garden Ridge. Traffic caution, we've got this handy-dandy radar gun up there.
Can I tell you everyone that's viewed the video, correct, Kevin?
Yes. There's an audit trail. It will, it will tell you who viewed it, and we're supposed to enter why we viewed it. So now we have audio, so this is going to be that footage. And as you can see, there's wind noise. There are going to be problems that it's not going to capture something the officer said, or the person might have said due to highway noise, wind noise, and things like that.
Let's see, six copies there.
And what he's doing there is talking on the microphone. He has it clipped up here, so his arm's covering the microphone.
King John Young, 5485. King John Young, 5485. Hello? Hey, Officer in Elizabethville Police Department, you got the sheriff's license insurance? Sir, do you know where you're being stopped today, buddy?
I'm not sure.
Know how fast you were going?
But you can see it's pretty good quality video.
Yeah, miles per hour. Speed, it's only 23 in the school zone.
Yes, sir. How does your clock say?
I'm glad that's not me.
I forgot where I was at that time.
Does it say 2:30 or 2:37? Okay. So what I do at the beginning of the school zone is I drive around, make sure all the lights are blinking, and you hear that gives me enough time.
That gives you some idea how it works. You will see sometimes the officer will actually hold the driver's license right in front of the video, and that documents who, who gave him the driver's license in case later on, they say it wasn't them. If we do the portable bread testing, they can hold that in front of the camera, and it'll show what that result was. And then officers can dictate on a call that, you know, I smell marijuana coming from the vehicle and things like that. So from the evidentiary value, it's going to be great. That is all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions before I turn it over to Captain Hurdle.
I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know if they're all yours to answer. Who owns the video? Us?
We own the video.
We own the video. Is there consideration to possibly use some of this as promotion? As the ability to say, hey, here's, here's, we did a great thing?
Absolutely. And our policy sets, you know, sets that out, that we can use, we can release some of this video if we think it's necessary for training. And even if we think it's some, you know, some need to dispel concerns of the community, we can do that.
Okay. Mr. Lee, the city upload, does these work like the car cameras used to work, where they get into the Wi-Fi umbrella at the PDE and then upload in a batch, or?
Negative. So the way these work is once the officers come back to the station, they're docked. So there's like a bay that's docked, and then you have ethernet cable that's routing that up.
And it's automatically doing that? Okay.
And Councilman, that was part of our concerns, because at the end of the shift, there would be multiple officers all docking their body worn cameras. So that's when we were concerned about the networks.
Gotcha. Gotcha. I was just curious, because I'm a geek, so I appreciate that.
So our major concern was that, the additional traffic, right? But fortunately, and we have seen an increase, but it's not impacting end users. And the increase is more in your upload, right? So that's where you're traversing more so, you know, the majority of end users using that download pack. So we're in good shape there as far as consumption.
And how are we on FOIA requests and whatnot? Are we starting to see an uptick now that we have video? I have a concern, just because I saw what happened in Carrollton, but I think they've got two to three evidence managers now, simply, at least one, if not two, are handling video exclusively.
You know, that was all the reasons why we asked for that additional technician to not only help us with managing, getting that data evidence to somebody to fulfill an information request. To my knowledge, we haven't seen a great deal of increase.
We haven't yet.
Specifically with body worn camera.
It's pretty good.
You know, that's probably, you know, a good reason for us to kind of be on the back end of implementing our program in comparison to Dent County. When I did a little survey earlier this week about how many agencies in Dent County already had a body worn camera, just about everybody does, except, you know, we were sort of the last ones to come on. So I think it's been that rush to reach out, get all that video, and, you know, ask for it, it's probably died down a little bit. But, you know, it kind of remains to be seen if we see a great uptick there. You know, maybe a staffing issue.
Appreciate it. We'll continue to monitor.
Two questions. First, the camera view being blocked because of the use of the microphone, is there any thought to trying to find a way to avoid that?
Yeah, we allow the officers to wear it wherever they're the most comfortable. What you will see is a lot of them wear it here, and the reason they wear it here is because if their arms are up here, it'll have a clear view. I'm not sure there's a spot anywhere on them where it's going to be completely 100% unobstructed at some time.
Okay. It seemed like every time he talked, it was an obstruction, so, in the video.
Yeah, and especially when he's on the microphone, but as the stop would have continued, he has no need to be on the microphone, so that would have dropped off.
Could usually at the very first of a call, he's going to be on the mic.
Yeah, some where I'm here and some where I'm up here, so I think that, we'll look at that as we go forward as well, if we see a lot of it.
The other question is, you mentioned up to eight triggers and identified four. Are the other four identified, pre-identified? Are they defined or are they undefined, or is that just open for future use, or?
It could be any trigger where there's some sort of current. You know, and there's only so many things on a car. The holster thing is relatively new, and, you know, as soon as they come out, out of the holster, it would trigger it by Bluetooth. So we're not limited to anything. It could be when the trunk is released, if that's what we wanted. So however we think it could be wired, you know, is what we will do.
The key provision's going to be, whatever we do, it will be standard for everybody.
Sure. So the question I have then is, then, I can think of, not exactly a mechanism, well, I can think of, actually, I can think of two mechanisms for this, but is there any thought to triggering it automatically once the vehicle exceeds a certain speed or accelerates at a certain rate?
We can do that with the in-car video. I'm not sure if we can do that with the body worn camera.
But you are covering that with the in-car?
Yes.
Or you say you can, are you?
Oh, yes, yes, we are.
Then we're good.
All right. I'll turn it over to Captain Casey Corden.
Okay. Those of y'all that don't know me, I've been here about 24 years as a police officer. Had the pleasure of working with Special Operations Group for the last two years. They limited me to like 75 minutes.
Are you running our office?
I want to start off by showing you all a picture of the whole group. It's really difficult. It's probably the most proud moment of my two years, getting all of these guys in one room at one time, because they're all going different directions so fast. That's kind of difficult, but I had that picture. It's made up of five smaller units that's supervised by three sergeants, and then I supervise those three sergeants. We fall under the Community Services Bureau, which is supervised by Assistant Chief Taylor, who's here in the room with us today. Each one of these groups really has a specialized task associated with what they deal with. What makes them special is not necessarily that they're better than other police officers. All of our police officers are very knowledgeable. They all have skills and ability to deal with every circumstance they come in contact with. What's special about them is the training that they have and the time that we give them to deal with some more detailed problems. We've identified these five different groups, and the kind of problems they deal with takes a little bit more time. A best example I can give you is like a homeless person or a homeless family that we run across. If a patrol officer runs across this sort of circumstance, middle of the night, it's cold outside, the immediate problem is getting that family a place to stay for the night. I've seen patrol officers pitch their money together and buy a hotel room for these kind of families, right? That's, that's dealing with the immediate problem. That's the kind of time that they have, because they've got calls waiting, they've got to go to the next call. These, my favorite resource officer would be the group that I would say would deal with a homeless issue like that. And what they do, spend a little bit more time looking for a longer-term solution. So they deal with other agencies, they deal with other departments within the city, they deal with outside social services, like they might, you know, set up getting some meals at the Salvation Army, you know, across the way. They might set up with the CCA to get them some longer-term housing, some things like that. So that's, they have the time to do that, whereas the patrol officers do not. So that's, that's what makes them really special in our mind. They have some training and they have some time to deal with those problems. Of those five specialized units, they work together with just about every other unit or division or bureau within our department. They do work with other entities, you know, in the area, whether it's law enforcement agencies or social services. They also work with other departments within the city. So they use building inspections or code enforcement, some of these things, to solve some of the special problems that they deal with. LISD is another partner of ours, and we work a lot with LISD, with our School Resource Officer Group. Local businesses, the NROs contact local businesses and local apartment complex managers, trying to, you know, talk to them about crime trends in the area and try to, you know, help them inform their residents, or they help, they do some, you know, surveys to help, whether it's an apartment community or a citizen, learn how to not be a victim of crime. So they do a lot of training in those kind of things. This is the NRO unit. They did a unit photo ahead of time. We're able to get into the slideshow for you all. This unit is supervised by Gordon Blair. Those of y'all that know the little brick building out front, there's actually people that office in there. And we just did a little bit of a remodel, got some new carpet on the floor and paint on the walls. It really is nice if you ever get a chance, stop in and check it out. The officers there are Greg Hopper, Marnie Hall, Joel Baker, and JT Flores. They have cities split up into four different districts. They really take ownership of those districts. They go out in the community. And this is the responsibilities they do. They do a lot of education, community education. They do crime watch meetings. They mark all the abandoned vehicles in the entire city. If you call in, there's a car parked on my street, they go out there, mark the tires, and make sure that a wrecker comes and gets it off your street if it's, if they're longer than the law allows. They do a lot of craze training, which citizens respond to active shooter events training. They do a lot of these crime prevention surveys I mentioned earlier. So we'll go out and actually spend some time walking around your house and show you how to trim shrubs and do lighting around your house to make it less likely to be a victim of property crime. They do bicycle rodeos, teaching kiddos how to be safe on bicycles. They end up, they're actually the rapid response team for this building. So if you office in this building and you have some unruly customer at your office or at your desk, and you call the police department or call 911 and say, hey, I need a police officer right now, it's pretty likely that one of those folks is going to be the one running up those steps and coming in to help you guys out. So if you see a police car out there, there's probably one in that building. They do a lot outside their office, but, you know, obviously, when you do police work, the phone side of it, there's always the paperwork side that goes with it. So they had to backdo it with that. They work with the homeless population, and they try to get them help. They also have to do some enforcement. I don't know if y'all are aware, there's some vacant buildings in our city, and they've been working with building inspections to get some of those things boarded up and prevent that from being a home place for some of these homeless people, and try to get them a better location, more suitable to their residence. And they do a lot of outreach events, like National Night Out, block parties, and Coffee with Cops, where they actually get out and shake some hands and make some one-on-one relationships with folks. This is just a couple of pictures from the event. This Officer Hall doing a safety event at Old Navy, where she was helping some kiddos get some community service hours for a, for college applications and stuff. This is a National Night Out party. And if y'all know JT Flores, this is a real difficult thing to get is a picture of him. He does not like his picture being taken, so I thought I would definitely put a picture of him in there. So that was out with us, with some citizens at a townhome pool area during National Night Out. This is Officer Hopper and Joel Baker doing the stranger danger talk and crosswalk safety talk at a local park with a lot of youngsters from daycare. And a bicycle rodeo that they did down at the Creekside Elementary School, where they showed kiddos how to ride their bikes safely and wear helmets, and had a bunch of neat tips for the kids, so. Next group, we'll talk about the School Resource Officers. There's six of these guys and gals, and they are assigned to each one of the high school campuses and the middle school campuses. So there's three high school campuses in our city, there's five middle schools, and one, the Lewisville Learning Center, where if a kiddo gets in a little bit of trouble at school, they may be asked to attend that campus as opposed to the one that they normally attend. And so we cover all of those campuses with the SROs. In that, they have quite a few responsibilities. They're really a liaison between the police department and that school district. They mentor those kids, they build relationships one-on-one with those kids. They are asked to do a lot of presentations for the students there. They'll oftentimes, you know, the teacher's going over to local government in a, in a particular class. They'll go in and actually teach the class on that day, so it's kind of neat. They do some drug awareness programs, and they also work for the school as far as ensuring campus safety. So that's a big buzzword right now. You know, we're all about protecting our kiddos, that's our resource for the future. And they are the first line of defense, and I can promise you that we have a good one with offensive and defensive weapons to be the first line of defense in that school. They're already there. They have a office that has a secured locker that's only accessible to the School Resource Officer. They don't have to leave the school and go get something out of their car, they don't have to drive back to the police department. And the goal is for them to save precious seconds, not minutes. It's the seconds that we're trying to deal with, if that were to be the event. And we have trained these folks to respond to that kind of thing, and we have also picked people for these positions that we know are capable of dealing with it, so. This is some of the events. They help out the even elementary school programs, so this is a career day that Officer Tice helped out with. This is a couple of different events here. This is Officer Flores at a elementary school, and Officer Laura Smith at a different elementary school. So they did some reading programs, where they went and read to the kids. And you're pretty neat how they are able to get on the kids' level and get down there. It's, it's an opportunity for some of those kids that never get to see a police officer in any other life, but see them in a positive way. So they're not showing up at their house in the middle of the night dealing with something their parents did, something like that. So the next group, we'll talk about the Street Crimes Unit. This is kind of the chameleon of law enforcement. They do a little bit of everything. We ask them to carry on very odd hours. One day, they might work mornings, the next day, they might work in the middle of the night, and it's responsive to whatever needs we have that day. It's supervised by Sergeant Ken Nafziger. The detectives in that unit are Martin Popick, David Nico, Adam Frederick, and Drake Bartlett. And these guys are experts in surveillance. So surveillance on TV stakeouts seem really, really cool. In reality, they're really, really not. So that takes a very mature law enforcement officer to be able to do that for hours and hours, gaining necessary intelligence to be able to conduct safe operations, as safe as they can be for us. So they work really hard at that. Here's some of their responsibilities. Like I said, they're reactive, they do a lot of surveillance. They do a lot of proactive police work, so organize crime abatement, they attack crime trends. So if we're having a lot of burglaries in an area, these guys are going to be in undercover cars, driving up and down or sitting stationary in that area, watching for people doing suspicious things so that they can swoop in and apprehend these suspects. So sometimes they're in uniform, sometimes they're in covert assignments. So an example of a uniform assignment, if they are helping another unit within our department, let's say it's narcotics, and they know this person has drugs, and they're going to be transporting them through our city, they might call on these guys to be in undercover to watch that car at a particular address. And when it leaves, you know, they're undercover car, and they've got a marked unit down the street. And as soon as they see this car leave, they'll say, hey, we need to follow that car. As soon as they start speeding through the school zone, we want to stop them. And if we wait till they get, obviously, we wait until the school zone, and stop that kind of car. So they have different assignments. Like I said, fluctuating work hours. It takes a very dedicated officer to work in this unit because of the work hours. I don't know how they explain it to their wives where they are, I don't have a lot of that, hours of day and night. This is an example of a cooperative operation where patrol received an anonymous tip about a large amount of dope running through our city, it's marijuana. The street crimes guys sat out in the suspected route of trouble. They saw a car that matched the suspect description. The narcotics were out there with them to help them contact the folks and get consent to search their cars. Amazing how these people are as consent to look at places, whenever they know that's there. But it was 419 pounds of marijuana, and in 24-plus years, I've never seen that much at one time, so these guys were high-fiving. That's not really the coolest picture that they made with that, obviously. They're very hard. This is another street crimes gang. They, they, they go out and work with HSI a lot, which is Homeland Security Investigators. So there was a numbed gang member that lives and works in our city, who had federal warrants for possession of a firearm by felon. He was in a business. They asked us if we would watch and make sure when he got to that business. So we had our undercover guys watching that business and said, yep, he's here. They showed up at our briefing room, they used, all of their personnel came in and briefed up on the event. We accompanied them down there just to be at our perimeter, so that our citizens that were in the area would know, hey, this is a police activity, not a bunch of goons in gray outfits. And we look a little bit more like police, because there's police all over everything we have, and then we had some mark squads down there as well. He was taken into custody, no issues whatsoever, but like I said, somebody that you wouldn't want in our city, and we were able to get the assistance of HSI, and they asked us to help them, and in return, a lot of times, we were able to ask them for the same sort of assistance. The unit is supervised also by Ken Nafziger. It's only two officers. When I say only, Detective Lamone is known statewide for his knowledge base. He is very, very, very well-renowned. He actually went to a training, it's like a two-day training seminar, and the guy that was putting on the seminar was playing his slides from another presentation. He said, uh, the guy, you know, misstated what one of the slides was. He said, uh, that guy's name's whatever, whatever, here's what he had for dinner that day. And I mean, he knows everything about these folks. So because of his knowledge base, the Homeland Security Investigators Gang Task Force asked him to come over and work with them. They pay some overtime for him. He works both in our office and in the HSI office. And the goal of that is to actually attack the problem before it gets inside the confines of Lewisville proper. So by dealing with the problem as it's coming in, we're able to hopefully keep it completely[1736.23] out. He works in our city as well, and likewise to the HSI street crimes operation, we get the assistance of HSI. We get a lot more manpower. If we have a big event, we have a lot more resources and manpower we can call on as a result of his assistance in that. Some of the things they're responsible for is managing gang files. They keep track of everybody that comes into our city or lives in our city that's a member of a gang. There are certain criteria to get on that list, and it's set up by federal law. They work a lot with other agencies. They work a lot with the different units within special ops as well as within our department as a whole, because a lot of people that use narcotics, believe it or not, are gang members. And a lot of people that go to the school, high school, might be gang members. So they work with SROs, with the narcotics unit. It's pretty neat how they all work together to solve some of these bigger problems. They give a lot of promote, or presentations rather, to promote gang awareness, and they also conduct some zero tolerance enforcement measures to convince some of these gang members if they're going to live in our city, it might be best that they either stop doing what they're doing or move elsewhere. So maybe cannot completely change their behavior, but we might change their address. This is a, I think it's quite a long one, this one. This is HSI video. We're in, you might recognize that guy.
And right now, we're conducting Operation Regent's Hope. We're going to make our street paper, and we're going to be targeting MS-13. We're going to target their members and associates who pose the greatest public safety threat and those that continue to provide financial support to MS-13 back in El Salvador and Honduras.
So the guy talking in that video is Agent Tim Brown from HSI, and he rode with Detective Lamone for about a year and a half before he begged for Lamone to come and work with him in his office so that he could share his knowledge with his other comrades in the HSI office. So just like I said, that was him talking, and Lamone was following him around, but they never showed their face. He too doesn't like his picture taken. The last unit I will talk about is Narcotics Unit. It's supervised by Sergeant Dan Coltrane. Detective Eddie Barrett, if y'all know him, he's getting close to retirement. It's a sad day for us, he's a super neat guy, but he has been assigned to the BEA Task Force, which is in Dallas, for the last two years. And he's going to be replaced by Detective Gordon, if y'all know him, he's quite the character. I'm trying to get him to come up here, he does a rap thing when he does presentations at schools, but he had an event with his kiddos that couldn't come. So he's cross-training Gordon to take his place. We're getting ready to select a new officer to take the place in our local office, and we have currently three detectives, Michael Hernandez, Johnny Copley, and John Michael Martinez. We're going to be selecting another one later this week. Everything that detectives in this unit do, they have to do at least with two because of the danger of what they're doing. We end up sending them out on tip follow-up, so if somebody calls in a tip, they text a tip, they, you know, walk in the front door of the PD and tell us a tip, or they tell a police officer, or a police officer's on the call, and they say, "Hey, there's something funny with this address." Investigate all of them. We track them. Their requirement, whenever they don't have an operation going that day, they work on that tip sheet, they work down that list. So if you think a tip falls on deaf ears, it does not. And I think I've got a, this is a list of their responsibilities. They work with confidential informants, they do some undercover buys, they follow up on patrol cases, so like they send narcotics that's seized by patrol, they send it to lab, make sure that those results get put back with the case report for prosecution. They obtain search warrants based off some of these undercover buys, and they work with the SWAT team to serve those search warrants. So they're typically dangerous, and so the narcotics guys don't normally go kick indoors. We leave that to the guys that have all the really cool equipment that can do that, it's much more safer than we can. Safer than we can, but they also do a lot of public education presentations, and they work a lot with other agencies in our area, because once again, we're trying to catch those problems as they're coming into our city. We don't want to wait till it lands in our city and pretty much festers here. So we'd rather attack it first before that time. I've got a slide here, a second, it's going to show some of this. This is a cooperative effort where we worked with DDA. We stopped a vehicle that they were aware had a large amount of methamphetamine, five kilos is quite a bit, kilograms. And after stopping that car, finding the five kilograms, they end up talking to them, and believe it or not, they had 20 more back at their house. So that's a lot, a lot. So when we deal at street level, it's normally like one gram, not a kilogram, and surely not 25 kilograms. So that is a lot, that's kind of cartel-level bust. And it also came with $40,000 cash and a vehicle that was awarded to Lewisville Police Department as a result of our participation in that assist. This is a short video, and it's, what it is, it's a knock and talk. And it's kind of, it seems strange, it seems kind of, you won't see all of it. One officer has on a pair of glasses with a camera, it's very, very discreet. The other officer is Saylee Gordon, that's actually knocking on the door, making contact. The suspect that they contacted had the door halfway open, so he was kind of hiding his right hand behind the door. What they couldn't see initially was that guy had a pistol pointed at him bug behind the door. So if, when we're playing it, at one point, the guy finally decides, "Hey, this might be a bad idea," and he goes to set the gun down on the counter and opens the door up a little bit more, and the officer that's wearing the glasses can tell that's what he just did, and he rushes in and pushes him away from the gun. Oh, get away, get away, get away! Back up! So he took him about a half a step back, and he started coming back towards that gun, that's the reason he pushed him back. And like I said, he saw just a glimpse of it, he grabbed that gun, because it was another guy that was on the counter separating the living room from the kitchen, and there was another suspect in the kitchen right where he had set it. So they do some pretty dangerous things. This is actually the stuff from that 25-kilo stop that I had on the previous slide. I think I got those two out of order. These are some local knock and talk arrests and seizures. So you see, it's maybe not quite the same amount as the 25 kilos from the DEA assists, but these are things that somebody, they knock on the door and the person goes, "Yeah, I'll show you all my dope," and just walk in and show it to them. It's really strange, it's really strange. But like I said, we seize quite a bit of cash, quite a bit of narcotics, some guns, and some pills, and it's, like I said, it's a daily thing. They are very, very active, this is a daily kind of thing. It's not like a once every blow, it really happens a lot. How do these five different units work together? Kind of use a little bit of an analogy, they work like fingers on a hand. They all look a little different, they all have different, you know, tasks or skills, and they can do a little bit by themselves, they work the best when they're all working together. And they work together also with the department, with the city departments, and with other agencies in the area. And they do that to try to, you know, like I said, be a proactive approach to law enforcement and to the specific problems that they're trying to address. So I'm real proud to be a part of that unit right now. I'm getting ready to transfer, but I'm here to tell you, it's a good reputation, good reputation. Got any questions? We've got one question. I talked too long, didn't I? Sorry.
Thank you.
Good stuff.
Ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll start with demarcation by Deputy Mayor Protem Jones, followed by pledges to the American Texas flag by Councilman Ferguson. Then we get to item one. Any questions? Item two. Item three.
Mayor, I'm abstaining from this one. There's a small section in here where there's some public comment that speaks to the landfill being used as a BMX bike potential. And because I had abstained on a previous one that talks about the landfill in that kind of a capacity, I feel it's best that I be consistent. I'm a huge supporter of the program of the entire Park's Open Space Master Plan, but this little particular comment tags along, so I'll be abstaining on this one.
Thank you. Any other comments? And that's the good sign agenda, item four.
This item was something that was very important to our police officers to assure their security. So this is kind of the first part of the purchase with bullet-resistant glass. There is a diagram in the backup that shows you exactly where that glass will be on the front of the building, and then there will be a perimeter fencing that...
It's going up now, it's going up. About having comments on that? Item five. Item six. I ask that this be put on just to show regional support for the high-speed train between Dallas and Houston. Just in the spirit of assistance. And if it does come into the area, it will assist all of us and help all of us in another mode of transportation between here and the Gulf Coast.
It's good economic development.
I'm ready to go on.
Saving an hour, messing with TSA.
Item seven. Item eight.
Tommy, can you just kind of, I don't know, clarify this a little bit?
Item eight?
Yeah.
So a number of years ago, they passed a law that had basically established what they called the GRIP, and that's a mechanism for establishing the rates. And that's been kind of a battle with the group of cities since that point in time because it really leads to poor rate-making. It doesn't keep rates in line like it should, and so the cities have joined together in this group, and the RRM mechanism, we feel, is much better as far as rate-making. And so you have, the impacts of capital can't be inflated, and so it just leads to being able to keep our rates in line.
Item nine.
So if there are questions, staff has worked diligently on this project, and we do have some diagrams if that would be helpful. Tim, could you show you?
Sure.
And this is what I talked about at retreat, and this isn't everything I would want, but we're getting one call replacing two, so it's every little bit...
A lot less visible location.
Yes.
See, there's a lot going on here, so we wanted to take just a minute and try to explain what's happening. So the variance essentially is that City Code does not allow for any new overhead electrical utilities. Everything has to be undergrounded. Well, for the South Village Mix Juice Project, which is right here, there was a challenge to that because they have to go underneath these major sewer mines, sanitary sewer and stormwater lines. So they came to us and asked if they could overhead. So on this diagram, everything you see in yellow is currently existing as overhead electric. The red line right here is what they're asking to be an overhead utility. About 90 feet there, but it's located behind the buildings there. So if we can do that, they're also going to, the developer is going to bring power in. You've got Ken Owens Battery, you've got the insurance shop in the Old Town Market. They'll come in from the existing overhead right here, they'll underground and drop a transformer here, and then underground the services to each of these three businesses. Okay? And what that'll do is we can eliminate then, as part of this, the utilities going across the street. So we saw an opportunity. So these three lines you see here, that feeds the meat market, those will come away. And on the other side, you've got this single line that goes to Ken Owens Battery. Sorry, trying to look. So this will go away also. The telecom line here, for a certain extent, I think it's over here, oh, I messed it up, sorry. Anyway, a little bit of the overhead, a lot of the telecom line will go away, but there will be a small section that'll still stay there. They typically rent space on Texas-to-Mexico poles, so Texas-to-Mexico can kick them off a pole, which they'll do for a percentage of this project, but the cable has their own pole there, so it's not part of it. So as we were saying, we're getting rid of three or four highly visible lines crossing Mill Street to have a smaller overhead utility in the rear. So I felt it was a good time to broker it, and the developer is paying for all that on his dime, too.
Does that make sense? Any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Item ten.
This is also a fairly complex project that staff has worked, again, very diligently on. So in order to make this project work, Tower Bay with the two access points necessary, you have to go through core land. And so that's what's really leading to most of our issues and constraints here. So we do have a conceptual letter of approval that we received from the Corps, but that does still, it's not a final approval. But they are asking to be able to move forward with a building permit prior to completion of public improvements. And the performance bond is kind of an interesting thing because they actually, the developer has their loan through HUD, and they've already had to cash escrow the same public improvement, so they would be having to double escrow those improvements, and so that's why we're willing to accept the bond. And we feel, you saw a letter from the fire chief in the background related to non-combustible improvement construction. We think there is no risk there, and so we think that that's appropriate also. So that, basically, Tim, you want to add anything to that?
I think that covers it, if there's any questions.
What if the Corps doesn't come? I mean, what if the Corps...
That's certainly a risk, that's a risk that the developer is taking. It's not a city risk. It's not a city risk.
As long as the variance is our contingent upon execution of the letter agreement. Because that's where you put the demarcation.
There's a separate agreement with the developer to that effect.
The trail that's going on the core land is also going to serve as a secondary means of access for emergency services, which is required by COO. So if they can't get that, really the project can't be built.
Anything else? We have one, we do have an exception session tonight. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll reconvene at seven o'clock in the council chamber. At seven o'clock, we'll call tonight's meeting of the Lewisville City Council Order. First item of business is invocation given by Deputy Mayor Protem Jones, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Ferguson.
Please rise for a moment of silent contemplation.
Thank you.
Join me in the pledges to our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Public hearing number one. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard on 2.4718 acres located at 1620 Riverview Drive. New Stars Drilling's proposed contractor's yard will include a new office building, shop, and screen space for outside storage. P&amp;Z recommended approval by vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the proposed ordinance as set forth in the caption. Planning Director Richard Lutke is available to address any questions.
Okay, no other public, okay.
Make a motion to close public hearing. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Your discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
I'd like you to make a motion to approve as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for a contractor's yard on approximately 2.4718 acres legally described as Lot 1 Block C, Riverview Industrial Edition, located at 1620 Riverview Drive and zoned heavy industrial district, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Public hearing number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a special use permit for minor automobile services on .572 acres located at 1299 Justin Road. The applicant did not provide the required variance request letter, therefore, the public hearing must be continued. The recommendation is that the city council continue the public hearing to the April 2nd, 2018 regular meeting.
Okay. We have a motion?
Go ahead.
Move to continue the public hearing until April 2nd?
Second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Counselor, is that all we need to do on this one? Uh, councillor, is that all we need to do on this one? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is continued. Item three. TJ, you want to do anything?
Mayor, um, to be consistent on this one, uh, there happens to be a bit of public comment involved, um, in the backup documentation regarding a BMX bike opportunity on the landfill. Uh, because of that being in there, and because I'd like to be consistent in my abstentions, that could create a perceived conflict of interest with my company, so I will be stepping out of this particular one. However, I am a huge full-throated supporter of our parks and our trails, and am very excited to see what we're doing.
Thank you. Okay, city secretary?
Public hearing number three. Consideration of the adoption of the Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan update. The proposed update is based on input gathered through stakeholder meetings, two surveys, and information from needs and spatial assessments. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted to support the proposed update. The recommendation is that the city council adopt the update as presented. We have Lenny Hughes present to address any questions.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close?
Second.
We have a motion to close and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We have a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Visitor-
Okay.
Visitor citizen form. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. We have Nathan Thomas that would like to speak before the council. Mr. Thomas, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Nathan Thomas. I live at, uh, 2041 Aspen Place, Lewisville.
Okay.
I'm a forty-year resident.
Thank you.
I'm here to, uh, ask the council to consider, uh, nullifying, uh, City Ordinance 11-13A because it is in direct conflict with the First Amendment of the United States, period. The very first Senate. And I have some items here, little booklets, I would like to pass one out, uh, to give to the council, if you would consider it.
Uh, what do you have?
Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States.
Okay, if you'll handle it, me, I'll hand them out across here. Okay. Thank you.
That's been, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
There any questions? Okay.
Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I've received no cards.
Okay. Councilman Ferguson, do you have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item eight. Consideration of an ordinance approving a tariff authorizing an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process defined the Texas Utilities Code. Lewisville is a member of the Atmos City Steering Committee. Negotiations between the ACSC and Atmos Mid-Texas have taken place over the past several months and have resulted in a revised rate review mechanism tariff. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve?
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval. Is there any discussion? Councillor?
This is an ordinance of the city council, the city of Lewisville, Texas, approving a tariff authorizing an annual rate review mechanism as a substitution for the annual interim rate adjustment process defined by Section 104.301 of the Texas Utilities Code and as negotiated between Atmos Energy Corp., Mid-Tex Division, and the Steering Committee of Cities Served by Atmos, requiring the company to reimburse cities reasonable rate-making expenses, adopting a savings clause determining that this ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, declaring an, an effective date declaring an emergency, and requiring delivery of this ordinance to the company and legal counsel for the steering committee.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item nine. Consideration of a request for a variance to Section 9.5-101B related to the South Village Mixed Use Building located at 251 South Mill Street. Texas New Mexico Power is requesting a variance to set a new pole, pole man and transformer, and install 90 feet of overhead electric lines at the southeast corner of the above referenced property. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. We have Jeff Kelly, Assistant City Engineer for the city of Lewisville, and Roger Dickens from Texas New Mexico Power both available to address any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for anyone? Have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion?
All right, I'd like to thank all those involved for, uh, working hard to figure out how to make this a more aesthetically pleasing solution. Um, I think it's, I think it's a great compromise.
Yes, and, and, uh, I, I'd do the same, so.
And it's still familiar, we'll take one less.
One at a time, so.
I'll take two.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank everybody involved on this.
Agenda item 10. Consideration of three variances to Section 6-57 relating to the Tower Bay Lofts project located at 3,000 North Stemmons Freeway, and authorization of the city manager to execute the related letter agreement. The applicant is requesting the following three variances. One, the issuance of a building permit prior to completion of all public improvements. Two, a performance bond in the amount of the total cost of the public improvements in lieu of a cash escrow. And three, the construction of limited non-combustible improvements above the foundation slab. Staff recommends that the variances be approved only under certain conditions which are set forth in the attached letter agreement. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above, subject to the final execution of the attached letter agreement, which it authorizes the city manager to execute. Fire Marshal Tim Ippolito and Alfred Crozer from Tower Bay Lofts are present to address any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second?
Just to clarify, move to approve, um, subject to the letter agreement?
Yes, subject to the letter agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to the second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Uh, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now we're down to reports. Nika? Okay.
Councilmembers, park fans, just a reminder to join us out at Railroad Park this Saturday for the Funny Bunny Festival. Uh, we can all take a ride on the Boogie Woogie Tu Tu Train together at nine, starting at 9:30, so we hope to see you out there.
Okay, thank you. Tim? Russ?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor looks about three-quarters of a foot above the conservation pool, and they are letting out a lot of water as we speak.
Don't want any problems here in a few weeks. Eric, no? Councillor?
Yes, Mayor, everybody can put on their calendar. We've got a couple weeks, uh, actually about three weeks' notice on this. For Saturday, April 7th, it is the annual Keep Lewisville Beautiful Spring Cleanup. A little bit different, uh, details this year, it is starting off from LHS. Uh, last couple years, we've started off from Harmon High School. So, starting off from LHS, it goes from 8:00 until 11:00. Uh, we feed breakfast when you register at 11:00, and you're fed lunch, I mean, you're fed breakfast at 8:00 when you register, and 11:00 o'clock, you'll be fed lunch. And as I always say, it's the most fun you'll ever have picking up trash. So it's a great time, uh, remember, starting at LHS, Saturday, April 7th.
Thank you.
That's it, Mayor. Enough for me.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, let everybody know that we, since the, um, the Police Department has been doing such a phenomenal job with the Coffee with Cops, that I am no longer doing a councilman coffee. Instead, uh, we have a new, uh, a new pro, a program coming out, uh, called Moving Minds, and, uh, I've been talking with a lot of folks about healthy lifestyles and, and engagement within the city, so I need to put up or shut up. I will be at 1:00 this Saturday, from 1:00 to 2:00, we will be taking a one-mile tour, starting at the senior center, working our way over to Timber Creek, uh, to discuss the annual report, to discuss the MCG, to discuss, um, the, um, uh, Timber Creek and some of our, our flood control and those types of issues. Anything y'all want to bring? Uh, bring your dog, make sure they're on a leash. Um, and your kids, that's debatable, um, but you are all welcome, and, uh, if you have questions, concerns, comments, that's what we'll be there for, and we'll have folks there to answer questions and, and have a good time. We're also going to be doing, uh, what we call a trail analysis. We're going to start, uh, testing if our trails are meeting what residents' expectations are, um, as far as safety and usability. So we're going to be doing our first one of those, and I expect these to become a, a regular thing. Um, whether it's me, or whether it's the rest of council, whoever wants to get out there, we're gonna, we're gonna get out there.
Thank you.
This Saturday, 1:00.
Yeah. City manager? Councilman Ferguson?
Yes, sir. So, MCL Grand have a lot of things coming up, um, April 6th and 7th, two performances of Giselle by the Lake City's Ballet Theater. Uh, Black Box Songwriter Series continues with a group called The Flying A's, that's April 8th. Uh, Texas Tunes, April 21st, uh, personal friend, Jimmy Webb will be playing, uh, that evening, a very well-known songwriter. If you're not familiar with him, Google his name, you'll be surprised how many songs you recognize, and so I think that's going to sell out pretty quick, if it hadn't already. Uh, public events, Pilates in the Plaza, Thursdays and Saturdays. Uh, Lula Row Shopping Event coming up March 25th. A Home Repair Grant Workshop on March 29th, presented by the city of Lewisville. The Playreaders Club on March 29th, presented by Our Productions Theater. I'm going to take a second and talk about that because I went to it, and it was, uh, it's fascinating. Um, they actually have people who have, uh, an idea for a play and have written one, come in, and they, uh, read that play, they divide up the parts, read that play, and then they critique it and talk about what it would be, take to make it a successful performance. So it's really an interesting twist on what you might think goes on, um, but it was a, it was a fun evening to watch, and, um, so I probably will go back. Uh, sixth annual MCL Grand Songwriting Workshop with The Flying A's will be on April 7th, and of course Acoustic Jam every Friday night, presented by the Visual Arts League. The art exhibits going on right now, LISD District Art Show continues through April 14th. We've done the high school, the middle school, now we'll transition to, I think we do the east side of Elementary first and then the west side. And if you haven't seen the art, I have to tell you, you need to go. You'll walk in, you'll look at things, and then you'll look at the grade the student is in, and, and it'll boggle your mind to think that somebody in, you know, the sixth grade did this piece of art. There's, uh, phenomenal, phenomenal artwork there. And then there's an exhibit by Sam Ivy called Monochromatic, which is, um, also fascinating because most of it's done with little tiny dots of ink. And, you know, so you have to look at it very closely, and, uh, that's in the North Hallway Gallery, and continues through April 21st, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Troyer?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Okay. Councillor? Okay. Thank you. Officer, thanks for your, uh, service to the community. Okay. Julie, you want to read the next one now?
Close session. In accordance with Texas Government Code Subchapter D, 1, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, 2, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations.
Okay. We will now go into executive session. Thank you. Reconvene in the meeting. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.